Thank you. We'll call the meeting to order. We respectfully acknowledge that the County of Halliburton is located in the twenty, Treaty 20 Mitchisiegog Territory and the traditional territory of the Mitchisiegog and Chepoa Nations collectively known as the Williams Treaties First Nations. We acknowledge the shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area and recognize the original inhabitants as stewards of these lands and waters since time immemorial. Is there any disclosure over your interest? See agenda?
That the February 26, 2025, Halliburton County Council Agenda be approved.
Someone move? Councillor Danielson, Councillor Carter. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. The council this morning, we have Halliburton Highlands Health Service Master Planning with a focus on long-term care and home expansion. Irene Odell, the Chair, and Veronica Nelson, President. Welcome, ladies.
Thank you very much for having us here today. I'm Irene Odell, Chair of the Board and Veronica, CEO. I wanted to start out today, we're here to talk about master planning, the future of care at Halliburton Highlands Health Services. It's a really exciting time for us because we are looking at all sorts of changes for the future to support our community and optimize the delivery of health care. I wanted to start out with, next slide, please. Thank you to all of the municipalities for writing emails for the Ministry of Long-Term Care to support our master planning. These letters will help move our case forward with the ministry and support the plans for the county. So thank you very much for those. Next slide, please. What is a master plan? And actually, it's what is two master plans. We have started our hospital master planning last year and moved on now with the long-term care master planning. The hospital hospital master plan is a mandated plan by the ministry and it assesses the services that are needed for the next five to 10 years, 15, 20, and 30 years. And looks at what we have in the way of infrastructure, looks at our buildings, comes up with a combined recommendation for how to best utilize our buildings and how to best support our community. The long-term care master planning is with the Ministry of Long-Term Care and it addresses long-term care. We are doing both of them at the same time because long-term care is a priority for our county. If you, Veronica will go into some of the details about how short we are on long-term care beds. It's a priority and it also aligns well with our hospital master plan because addressing the long-term care component of it enables us to optimize the existing infrastructure that we have and utilize parts of our buildings to further our hospital master plans. So it ties in well from a couple of different aspects. I'm going to turn this over to Veronica to go into the details, give you a bit of overview on hospital master planning and then long-term. Thank you.
Thanks Irene. Hi, it's Veronica Nelson. I'm the President and CEO at Halliburton Highlands Health Services. Next slide, please. Thank you for having us here. Just have one slide on what a hospital hospital master plan is. So there are three main stages. Going through those stages takes about 10 years. You can see the green arrow right at the top where we are. We submitted our initial plan just over a year ago now and we're waiting to hear back from Ministry of Health to proceed to the next stage. And that process does take quite a, quite a while once we receive the next approval to go forward. At the next stage, it means that we can start actually doing the planning, which includes technical studies, geotechnical studies, engineering studies, you know, road studies, all sorts of studies that will help us develop what the plans for the hospital will look like. Next slide. But today, we're here really to talk about long-term care. We know using 2022 Ministry of Finance data, which is what we're required to use, the population will increase by 22% in the next 20 years. So that's really in the next 17 years because this is three-year-old data. It's likely going to be increased more than then, more than that. But we also know that the 80-plus population uses healthcare resources the most. And so that is going to increase by 59%. Next slide. So what does that mean? Well, we also know that there are three long-term care homes in Halliburton County. Two of them are maintained and operated by us, Triple HS, and one by Extended Care. Extended Care was also granted the addition of 68 beds in 2022. So overall, we have the majority of beds across the county right now. We also know that it takes about 12 to 18 months to actually plan the design and then after that, about 18 months to two years to actually build. So the earliest, if we were to get approval today from the Ministry of Long-Term Care, the earliest we could move a resident in is probably four years from now. So the planning we're doing now is for the future and it's for the near-term future. Next slide. The wait lists in Halliburton County are more than the rest of the province. You can see those waiting in the community, so waiting at home to get into long-term care for Highland Wood, which is in Halliburton, is almost a year, and for Highland Crest is almost two years. Where in Ontario, it's a lot less. I just received some data this morning that says the growth for long-term care across the province is 38% growing in the next 10 years. But in eastern Ontario, where we are, it's a 43% growth expectation. That is a lot. And this data is from 2223. We already know that the wait times are longer than what we're seeing here. So imagine what those times are four years from now. Next slide. So what is a long-term care master plan? Well, what we want to do is have a sustainable, not-for-profit, long-term care home. And right now, we're operating two, which are not financially sustainable in the current legislative model. So what we need to do is come up with an innovative way, consolidate them into one site. But really, what we don't want to do is build an institution. We want to build a home-like model where people that live there feel like they're at home, they're not constrained to their room. If they have dementia or Alzheimer's, they're able to wander around in a safe space and they're able to live out their days in dignified with quality care. That's what we're hoping to do. Next slide. We also know that economic impact, socioeconomic impact to our county is very beneficial. Building long-term care brings jobs, brings people that live here. People that live here can stay here and live out their days. So we know it's beneficial to the county. Next slide. So where are we in the hospital, in the long-term care master plan? We're right at the beginning. Our plan is after our community engagement session on March 5th, we'll gather that input, implement it, put it into our application and submit it by the end of March. Part of that application requires how we're going to fund this. And so that's why we're here today. Next slide. So for your consideration, we have some requests here for you to think about as county councillors, but as well as within your municipalities. First and foremost, thank you for physician recruitment and nurse practitioner recruitment efforts. They've gone a long way. And as we know, we've got another family doctor starting. So thank you and just to please thank you and to continue to do that. You know, supports when we're ready to build, helping us with zoning or permits and things like that. And just general support of our overall planning and your feedback and input is very helpful. But today's request is for you to kindly consider if we're able to partner with you to access funding through Infrastructure Ontario on the gap that we'll have on the capital project. So that means Triple HS would partner with Halliburton County and pay back a mortgage that you would have access through, through Infrastructure Ontario. So that is the last slide and thank you very much. I'll take any questions.
Questions? Councillor Row.
Yeah, just kind of like the same subject, but maybe not. I'm asking for clarity because people are asking me for clarity. What we're talking here is about long-term care. A question that's been coming to me is end-of-life hospice-type scenarios where the stay is probably about a month. The outcome is obvious. Could you take a couple of minutes and just explain to us what we have available for that particular scenario? Because it is the end of life. It's long-term, but then the end of the long-term. And just what's available in Halliburton County that you know of?
We do have hospice services. We can provide them in person, face-to-face, or we can provide them virtually. We also have what's called the palliative care community team. And actually, yesterday, we just received confirmation that we do have a physician that's able to go out in the community and help with palliative care. And I think that's along the same lines you're speaking about. So we're also working with the Corel Lakes Halliburton Ontario Health Team to really streamline palliative care services in our county. And so that's evolving. And our hospice services are available as well. So we do have more information on our website about that.
Thank you.
Questions?
Resolution? That the presentation of Halliburton Highlands Health Services be received.
Someone move? Sorry, Buck, go ahead.
Just to add to that motion, you know, I think we need some sort of a report back from staff as to, you know, as to what all this means. And so it'd be good if we could add that to the motion. And I would move that.
Great, thank you. Second?
Deputy Mayor Row.
Councillor Row.
Sure, if you would, please. That the presentation of Halliburton Highlands Health Services be received and for the CEO be directed to prepare a report for council consideration regarding support for the long-term care facilities master plan.
All in favor? It's carried. Thank you.
Yeah, the Mr. Cook hasn't logged in yet, so we can proceed with the agenda and then come back to him when he's on the angles.
Right. So I guess we're, consent agenda.
Those motions that the items listed under the heading consent agenda for February 26, 25 be adopted as presented.
Someone move? Councillor Carter, second by Councillor McKechnie. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Consideration of reports, CEO, Community Safety and Wellbeing?
Yes, Ms. Tiffin.
Good morning, Warden Burton and members of council. Before you is a bi-monthly Community Safety and Wellbeing Status Report for February the first of the year to offer an update on CSWB activities that took place at the end of 2024 and that we are planning this spring. Highlights include the Community Safety and Wellbeing Youth Art Exhibition took place in December, both in person and with a virtual launch. The show featured more than 40 entries by students. Students created the poster for the show, hung their work, spoke to their thoughts on community safety and wellbeing and the show itself in a Canoe FM interview, and hosted the in-person event, including with refreshments from the Hospitality and Tourism Class. The show is a collaborative effort between these students, TLDSB, the High School, and JDHES, as well as the Rails and Gallery. The continuation of the Community Mobile Outreach Initiative, which began in June 2023. A new location for outreach this year is the John Howard Society Office in Minden. This spring, outreach will return to meeting outside of the Minden Courthouse on the monthly court date and the Minden Community Food Centre. The initiative continues to see new community partners joining, as well as new participants actively seeking out the outreach sessions. Again, another truly collaborative effort by all who organize, show up, and make it happen. The first meetings of the year for the Police Detachment Board, the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee, and the Community Safety and Wellbeing Committee have taken place. Webpages on the county site for each of these committees have been updated with dates the committee meetings take place. A second community supports an ID clinic is being planned for April 17th, with Service Canada and Service Ontario participating alongside numerous local organizations and agencies, I believe about 20 in total. The event was announced yesterday and has been shared by local municipalities. Thank you to DICE Art Council for approving our request of some possible parking lot space for mobile clinics outside of the event. I can share that we were successful with our Seniors Active Living Centre Programme grant application. However, the agreement has not yet been formalized. I'll be sharing more information about that programme as soon as I am able. In addition, a monthly column contributed by CSWB Advisory Table members or partners is now running in the Echo Times. And I've been asked to speak on community safety and wellbeing initiatives, add an Aging Together as Community Meeting, a Service Club Meeting, and a Service Providers Meeting in the upcoming weeks. I'm happy to take any questions or comments you might have about this report.
Okay, questions? That's an excellent report, Sue. Councillor Carter.
Not a question, but I'm just thinking of when you've got everything that you've put into here, and it makes it a very busy report. But I'm just thinking of the Joint Advisory Committee. Because if we look at, you know, housing, child services, and social services, which are all part of this wellbeing, you know, and there's a lot going on there, as you know, as you were at the meeting, that that should probably be included here also.
Here.
Thank you, Councillor Carter. I want to speak over Ms. Tiffin, but yes, exactly right. So one of the things we're working on now, Director Farber and I, Faber, excuse me, and I, from CKL, we're working on a protocol to kind of re-identify how we promote and how we communicate what's going on in social services to bring it some clarity back to this table. So going forward, you will see a separate report. It won't be part of this report, but there'll be a separate report dealing just with the joint services piece on the idea of the social services you mentioned. So it's something we're aware of and we're working towards getting a lot more detail before this table on the actions and what's going on in social services, not only like budget and things of that nature, but also the impact of the programs in our community, as in their effectiveness, how we're trying to make them better, those type of things as well.
I think that's really important because, you know, we have extended wait times on on housing and child services and we have certainly budget challenges in all of those areas. And we have, you know, I guess, abnormal growth in the, in the demand in all of those areas. So I think it really, this, this committee really needs to understand what's happening in Halliburton County on all that.
Go ahead.
To that point, yeah. So that is a priority of ours going into '25 is improving that level. But one thing I think is also that Ms. Tiffin didn't mention a report that's important for council to know is that with the work that Sue's been able to do in the, with the detachment board and bringing it forward and putting it in place in relatively short order, is the rest of the province is actually looking at us as a kind of an example as to how they're supposed to be run. So I think she should be congratulated for that and the work we've done so far.
Well done. Other questions?
Resolution?
That the Halliburton County Council receive staff report CSWB 022025, Community Safety and Wellbeing, February 2025 Status Update for information.
Someone move? Councillor Shell, second by Councillor Ferry. All in favor? It's carried. Council Code of Con-
Mr. Cook is now here, so if you want, if we-
Sure.
Go back to-
We have Jamie Cook, Managing Partner, Planning and Land Economics. Is Catherine coming as well?
Yes.
Good morning, Elizabeth. Did you want to introduce?
Yes. Thank you. Good morning, Warden and County Council. The 2025 Growth Strategy Update for the county is being brought to County Council for consideration this morning. With us virtually is our, sorry, our Jamie Cook and Catherine Zhao from Watson Associates, the consulting firm charged with completing the growth strategy update for us. A considerable amount of effort has been put in, not only by Jamie and Catherine and county staff, but also our local municipal staff in order to create a final document that will effectively and accurately guide growth across the county for the coming years. And we hope that council is satisfied with the report to approve it today as there is a resolution attached. I won't get into the specifics of the report. My staff report did highlight some key findings from it, but I don't want to steal Jamie and Catherine's thunder. So without further delay, I will hand it over to Jamie and Catherine to present to you the final growth strategy report for the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth, and good morning, members of council. It's a pleasure to be able to speak to you and come back before you just present the final results of this growth analysis update for the County of Halliburton. As you will recall, we started this project back in 2023 and we prepared an initial update in 2024. That work was reviewed by, by council and senior staff. It was determined at that time that we needed to go back and take a further look at the growth forecast, largely as a result of constraints to water and wastewater servicing in the county's urban settlement areas. So we've now gone back and taken a look at that and we provided a final outlook for growth for the county and each of its local municipalities. And so we're going to present that to you today. On the next slide, I just wanted to provide just a few introductory comments. So this work is being undertaken as a long-term outlook for growth. It's looking at population, households, and employment growth all the way up to 2051. So we're looking at a 30-year horizon from the 2021 census to 51. And we're conducting this within the context of provincial and local policy. And also looking at broader market conditions, as well as regional and local market conditions that are, and demographic conditions that are anticipated influence population employment growth over this long-term period. So this work will form a foundational document to the county's Development Charges Background Study, which is currently underway, as well as the county's official plan update, which is anticipated to commence in the near term. On the next slide, just wanted to point out as part of this work, we have had considerable consultation with a number of key stakeholder groups. We've had several meetings with county staff, as well as local municipal staff on both the previous projection work and the current updates that are being, are being presented to you today. We've also had discussions with the Coretha and Halliburton Human Services Department, as well as the number of realtors from the Halliburton area. When we talk about long-term growth projections and planning studies, we need to consider the context that we're working within. So we're working within both the provincial planning policy context, as well as the, the local county policy context and municipal context. As you may be aware, the provincial planning statement was revised and is now enforced as of October 20, 2024. This provincial planning statement is a key document. It provides provincial direction on matters of provincial interest related to land use planning and development in Ontario. This document essentially combines the previous 2020 PPS and the growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe into one integrated document. And a key underlying theme of this report was, or this, this document was, and the reason for the update was to ultimately provide a more outcome-based, less prescriptive approach to land use planning in Ontario in support of the province's goal to achieve greater housing development within Ontario. Ultimately, that goal of reaching 1.5 million homes over the next 10 years. And so a key thrust of this document is to remove unnecessary prescriptive processes and, and restrictions to, to development to accommodate more, more housing growth. It also removes detailed guiding documents that are required, that were previously required when carrying out studies like this. It does identify that provincial guidance will be provided. There hasn't been any, any detailed guidance provided to date. We still feel that the, there's a number of key elements that need to be provided in preparing a long-term growth projection. And so the document that we've laid out still does go through a very comprehensive approach to preparing the long-term growth projections for the county, but does so in a way that is consistent with the, the new PPS. And then ultimately, these results will also inform the county's official plan review and local policies as well. So I wanted to just get into some of the local drivers and, and trends that have been occurring in Halliburton historically and how these trends are shaping up future growth for the county over the next several decades. So this provides a summary of the historical population growth for the county over the last 20-plus years, going back to 2001. And you can see here in the slide that the county has had fairly steady population growth over the last 20-plus years. From 2001 to 2016, the county was experiencing moderate growth in sort of the 1% annual growth range, fairly consistent with the overall rate of population growth for the province as a whole. But you can see in 2016, we hit this inflection point and we saw significantly higher growth from 16 to 21. And we're still experiencing, looking at the post-sensile data, higher growth rates in the 2021 to 24 period, albeit that rate of growth is starting to slow down in the last year as growth has moderated and economic development activity is moderating more broadly across the region. What I wanted to point out, though, is that, and what we've identified in the report is that a large percentage of this growth uptake is not associated with additional permanent population growth in the county, but, but rather a result of conversions of seasonal households to permanent households that occurred during this 2016 to 21 period and 21 period to 24 period. And most of this conversion activity was heightened during the peak of the COVID pandemic between 2020 and 2022. And so this is going to be a theme that you'll see throughout the report and the presentation today as we go through this, these results. The next slide looks at where growth is coming from in terms of historical migration trends in the county. So there's three types of migration. There's international migration, so migration coming from other parts of, of the, of the world to internationally to to Halliburton. There's inter-provincial migration, so migration from other places in Canada, and then intra-provincial, which is migration from other areas of Ontario. And what you can see here is that Halliburton's really all about the intra-provincial migration story. There really isn't any international migration to speak of. It's very, very minor. It's that, there's a small blue, light blue line that you can see there. It accounts for less than 1% of migration in, in Halliburton. Interprovincial migration's also been either negative or actually, in each case, it's been negative. So we haven't seen migration from other parts of Ontario, I'm sorry, of Canada. And then what you can see in the dark blue is the interprovincial migration. Over the last two decades, it's been the driving force of growth in Halliburton and specifically during the 2016 period and post-2021 period, we've seen a significant amount of interprovincial migration. Again, a lot of this migration has been driven by seasonal residents converting seasonal dwellings to, to permanent dwellings, as well as additional construction of new permanent dwellings and migrants or new residents coming from other parts of Ontario to Halliburton. The, the graph on the right shows where they're coming from. And you can see that over 80% of the net migration, or the, you know, the newcomers coming to Halliburton is coming from the Greater Golden Horseshoe, about 48% from the GTA and 32% from the, the broader GGH, Greater Golden Horseshoe Outer Ring area. About 96% of all the migration is coming from Ontario. About 96% of all the migration is coming from Ontario, and about, as you can see, about 4% outside of Ontario. So again, this has been the key driver of growth, and it's quite different from when we look at an area, say, in the GTA, where most of the migration, or at least a large percentage, would be coming from international migration. Next slide. So this slide shows the long-term projections for the Ministry of Finance. And one of the things that the new provincial planning statement has done is that it's identified that the Ministry of Finance forecasts are to be used as a basis for long-term growth projections for municipalities, for official plan reviews, and for long-term land needs analysis. And so what we can see here is in the last seven years or so, the Ministry of Finance projections have increased fairly significantly for Halliburton County. You can see back in 2017, and the purple was the first period we've looked at here. And every year since 2017, there has been an increase in the amount of long-term growth that the Ministry of Finance is projecting for the county. What really stands out is the latest Ministry of Finance projections that came out last summer in 2024, which show a very strong increase in growth over the medium and long-term period. So that short-term period is a result of the trends that we've been seeing in the post-censal data and the 2021 census information. So really, what the Ministry of Finance has done is it's taken a look at that growth, and it's extrapolated that trend to a certain extent over the long term. It has moderated it. You can see that big inflection point from 2021 to 26 to then 26 to 51. But it essentially has extrapolated that trend. And the Ministry of Finance is pretty clear that it doesn't look at long-term economic trends. It doesn't consider servicing constraints. It really just is an extrapolation of demographic conditions. So we've looked at this, and we've recognized that this forecast is not an appropriate long-term forecast at this time, based on the discussions we've had with senior staff at the county and local level. And so we are not recommending this forecast as the long-term preferred forecast for the county, and I'll speak to this in further details as we get through our forecasts. So that's a good segue to the work that's been conducted as part of this analysis. And so we have prepared three long-term forecasts. Again, we started this work back in 2023, and we did look at three long-term growth projections for the county, looking at a low, medium, and high-growth scenario. The medium-growth scenario assumed a growth rate that was relatively comparable to the long-term trends that the county had experienced over the last 20-plus years. But when we look at the, and when we examine the existing conditions for accommodating growth within the county, particularly in the urban settlement areas, we recognize that there will be constraints to growth in the near and medium term and in the foreseeable longer-term period until these constraints to water and wastewater services can be resolved. And so for these reasons, we have identified that the low-growth scenario is the more likely and more appropriate growth scenario to be working with at this time for the county, which is the forecast that you see at the bottom here of the scenarios in the light blue that projects the county to a population of 28,200 by 2051. So this represents a growth rate of about 0.9% a year. It's a slower rate of growth than what we've experienced historically because of these constraints that we've been identifying. You can also see that it's bending over time, and so it's slowing down over the long-term period because of the demographic conditions that are influencing this trend. Essentially, the population within the county is aging. That puts downward pressure on population growth from natural increase. So essentially, natural increases burst less deaths. So as your population ages, you're seeing more deaths, less births. So you're more reliant on net migration to drive population. But because of that negative natural increase, it's putting downward pressure on growth over the long term. And I'll speak to some of these impacts as we go through the slides. So one of the key impacts of this is the age structure, and to be more specific, the aging of the population. And so what you can see here is a graph that summarizes the age structure of the county in major age groups, sometimes what we refer as cohorts. And we've looked back from 2006 going up to 2051. And what really stands out, if you look at the top of this graph, is the older segments of the population, the 65-plus age group in the sort of light green, cyan color and the gray. You can see in 2021, the proportion of permanent residents within the county over 65 years of age was about 35%, and that is growing to about 45% by 2051. And it's actually growing with negative migration that we're anticipating in the 75-plus age group. So we do expect that some of the 75-plus residents will leave the county over the long term, given needs for forms of housing that are more appropriate to aging residents and needs for healthcare services that may not be available in the Halliburton or surrounding area. But even with that negative outmigration, there's still a significant increase in the 65-plus age group, particularly the 75-plus age group. And if you look at that 75-plus age group over the next 30 years, it's actually growing at a rate of about 3.6%. So that's about four times the rate of the growth that we're experiencing for the county as a whole. So even if we don't achieve migration even to the levels of the low scenario, we do expect that we're still going to see this aging process. And it does essentially become exacerbated in a lower-growth scenario because there's less migration from younger age groups to offset this aging process. This trend is also identified in the Ministry of Finance projections as well to a similar extent. So when we look at the housing forecast, this is a summary of housing growth historically over the last 15 years and the forecast that we've identified in five-year increments over the next 30 years. And so what I want to point out is that this is Statistics Canada data. It doesn't necessarily reflect new construction. It reflects the change of housing in the permanent dwelling category in the county over time. And so as you see conversions happening, and particularly in that 2016 to 21 period, the census is now picking up those conversions. If they're occupied by permanent residents, they're getting picked up now as a permanent household. And so that's one of the key drivers of the growth increase you're seeing in the housing numbers from 2016 to 21 relative to the 11 to 16 period in the previous period. When we look at actual construction, we're actually seeing that actual construction for new dwellings typically has been ranging around 100 to 130 units a year pretty consistently over the last 15 years. So it's not that we saw a big spike in the amount of new construction activity. We've just seen a very strong peak or spike in the amount of conversions that have been occurring, particularly again during that COVID peak from 2020 to 2022. And that's what's been showing up in this data. Over the long term, we do expect to see the number of conversions to moderate, and we would also expect to see the amount of actual housing construction moderating slightly as well. So we're projecting an average of about 125 new households a year, including conversions over this long-term forecast period. And I'm going to speak to the conversions in a bit more detail in the following slides. Most of this growth is coming in the form of low-density households because you don't have servicing capacity over the long term to accommodate more growth in the urban areas. It is putting more pressure on growth outside of urban areas and in the form of low-density single-detached dwellings. Moving on to the employment forecast, I just wanted to briefly speak to the employment scenarios. Again, we've prepared three long-term employment scenarios, including a low, medium, and high forecast, similar to the population projections where we are recommending the low employment scenario as the recommended scenario that projects an annual employment growth rate of about 0.7% and identifies a total employment base of about 8,800 over the long-term period up from about 7,300 around 2026. And so it is projecting, we are projecting some moderate employment growth, largely in population-related categories like retail, commercial, institutional-type employment. It would also include work at home and employment that has no fixed place of work. So this could be landscape contractors. It could be consultants who are working remotely in Halliburton. It could be, those are involved in the trucking and transportation sector, for example, contractors. And we also would anticipate some growth in the tourism and industrial sectors as well. So I wanted to speak for a few minutes about the seasonal housing because obviously we can't have a discussion about growth in Halliburton without getting into a discussion about seasonal. And so, as I was saying before, a lot of the growth that we have been seeing from the census and housing and population is associated with these conversions. And so we've looked at impact data and Statistics Canada data, and we've tried to dissect this as best we can. And so this graph is looking at the change in growth between new development in permanent dwellings and the conversion of seasonal to permanent. And so in the light blue, you can see what we've identified as conversions, and the dark blue, this is permanent dwellings. And so again, in that dark blue in the permanent dwelling category, you can see that historically, going back to 2006, the permanent development activity has been fairly consistent at around that 100 to 130 units a year range. But what we saw, particularly from 16 to 21, was a big spike in the conversions, which is again why we're seeing that spike in the overall housing growth. We saw that carry forward into the 21 to 26 period through the first half of this period from COVID. But we are expecting to see the amount of conversions moderate steadily over time. We would expect that due to the demographic conditions of the aging of the baby boom population, they would likely be less inclined to continue to convert units over time as they age and require more amenities and access to urban services in urban settlement areas. So we would expect to see some net conversions back to seasonal. There's also only so many units that can be converted over time. So we would expect to see that number moderate steadily. And so over the forecast period, we're anticipating a flip from the last five years that we saw from the census of 60% conversions to something closer to about 40% or perhaps even lower over the long term. So that just gives you a little bit of a background on the conversion outlook for seasonal dwellings. The next slide provides a little more detail on the change in the composition of housing between permanent and seasonal. And so what we've been finding through our work in Halliburton, as well as in other areas within Ontario cottage country like Muskoka, for example, is that there has been some, over the long term, there has been some new construction activity in terms of seasonal housing development. But because there's been conversions over time, we're seeing typically a net increase of very little or negative increases in actual new seasonal housing stock in Halliburton. So as a result, we're seeing fairly flat population trends in the seasonal category, which is putting more upward pressure on the population in the permanent category. This is also meaning that we're seeing a greater share of the makeup of housing in Halliburton being comprised of permanent households as opposed to seasonal. And so that's already been happening. You can see from 2011 to 21, we went from 37% of the makeup of housing in Halliburton being seasonal to 45% being permanent. And going forward, we would expect that that percentage of permanent would also, would continue to increase from about 45% to 53%. And so over the next 30 years, we do expect to see some seasonal housing construction across Halliburton. But we would also expect to still see some conversions over time. And so on a net basis, we don't expect to see growth in seasonal households or population growth in the seasonal component of the population in Halliburton. So I wanted to now move on to the allocations. So as part of this work, we did allocate growth to each of the urban or each of the local municipalities and the urban settlement areas and remaining rural settlement areas and rural areas combined. So we provided an urban-rural split within each of the local municipalities. We're not going to get into all those details today, but we will highlight some of those trends. So this looks at each of the municipalities and looking at, sorry, housing growth over the last two census periods, I should say, three census periods from 06 to 21. And then we've summarized the long-term projections over the next 30 years. And so this is annual housing growth over each of these time periods. And what you can see is that in each of the local municipalities, you'll see first that spike in housing activity during the COVID period from 2016 to 21. And then you'll see that in orange, and you'll see in the purple that we have moderated the housing growth in each of the local municipalities over the long term to account for this moderation in population growth and housing, as well as these constraints that we've identified with respect to water and sewer servicing in the urban settlement areas. Next slide. So I also wanted to speak this notion of the urban and rural composition of housing in Halliburton. And so on the left, you can see the overall mix between urban housing and rural housing. So when we talk about urban, we're talking about housing that's identified in urban settlement areas that are fully serviced with water and sewer within the county. Between 2016 to 21, we saw about 25% of the housing growth occurring in those urban settlement areas. Over time, though, we would expect to see less growth occurring in the urban area because of these constraints that we've identified to water and wastewater servicing. Now, in most cases where there's servicing capacity to accommodate urban growth, we are seeing an opposite trend. We're seeing more growth in the urban areas and a shift towards more urbanization and more urban development. But in this case, without the availability of servicing, we are not seeing that trend to likely play out in the medium to long term for Halliburton. And so on the right, you can see what that means is that over time, the county will be increasingly comprised of more of a rural population base, moving from about 77% in 2016 to about 80% in 2051. So the last five slides just show the composition of population from 21 to 51 by area municipality. And really, what I want to point out here is that while we are experiencing relatively moderate growth, we're not experiencing or anticipate to experience major changes in the composition of population between the local municipalities. There are some minor changes, but we're essentially anticipating that each of the municipalities will comprise a similar share of population in 51 as to what is currently been identified in 21. So Menden Hills represents about 34% of the current population base. It's projected to represent 32% by 51 with less urban development and less conversions, putting a bit of downward pressure on that percentage of Minden's overall population share. Algonquin Highlands is shifting from about 13 to 14% of the overall county population. Highlands East is consistent at about 18%. And Dicert is increasing by about a percentage from 35 to 36% based on our work. And similarly, we're seeing similar trends on the seasonal base. No significant changes to the overall share of population. As I mentioned, we are expected to see a slight reduction in the overall amount of seasonal population by 51, even though we are anticipated to see some new construction across the county. And so Menden Hills currently represents about 22% of the seasonal base, and it's projected to decrease to about 20%. Algonquin Highlands is anticipated to increase from about 26 to 27%. Dicert, a slight increase from 32 to 33%. And Highlands East from, consistent at about 20% of the overall population per seasonal. So just to wrap it up, a few key takeaways for council. It's clear that the county has experienced significant population growth over the last seven years or so. Looking at the 2016 to 21 census data and the post-censal data, again, a large component of that increase in population Um again, a large component of that uh increase in population has been. Uh due to conversions of seasonal households to permanent seasonal dwellings to permanent households. Um we are seeing that uh conversion rate coming down. Um it's tr- it's difficult to get the latest information on that as of twenty twenty four. But we are anticipating that that number is coming down. The post censal uh population growth rate. Is still strong because there's a bit of a lag effect from all the construction and 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 the conversions that that took place in the last few years. But we are uh expecting that that is going to moderate uh uh fairly fairly significantly over uh the short term. Sorry, uh Catherine, just a few more few more points um. As I've noted, that we are um anticipating that the overall population growth will moderate in the longer term compared to the last eight years. Uh largely as a result of these servicing constraints that that we've identified throughout the uh report with respect to water and wastewater servicing capacity. We are not um recommending the use of the Ministry of Finance projections uh as I noted because of these constraints. Um and we would recommend that the county undertake review its of its servicing capacity and solutions to uh ultimately uh um provide. Um water and wastewater services over the long term. Um and if um. Any solutions are identified, uh we would recommend uh the county. Uh relook at these long term population uh and employment uh forecasts in the future. We would also recommend that this is regularly monitored, I would say on an annual basis. We have developed a number of uh monitoring tools for municipalities, and we'd be happy to talk to you about. How we could help uh to uh monitor uh monitor this growth uh regularly uh for the county over time. And so that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions as you might have.
Thanks, Jamie. Um Mr. C E O, should we have Catherine's report now? And then have questions or?
Um I I think we can break it up. Um any direct questions for Jamie is a lot of information is provided and some some recommendations and. And assumptions going forward. And I think Elizabeth can then follow up with her recommendations uh.
Questions.
Well, th- this presentation is great, but it's hard to follow it and uh really ask any intelligent questions, at least I found it was. I wonder if we could get a digital copy of both for uh. And then we could uh we could have a chance to digest it. I think you're optimistic, but uh. Nice to see people that are still optimistic.
Counselor Ralph.
Yeah, one of the things that uh that I I'm finding a hard time digesting now is the term seasonal. Uh seasonal used to be more or less related to a specific set of time. Be it May to June or or not May to June, May to May to September. I think the more correct term now is part time. Uh in the sense that people are no longer coming at any specific season, they're coming on a part time basis. Snowbirds are finding it extremely expensive to go anywhere, so they're using their properties a bit more. Uh if you just go out onto the snowmobile trails, you can obviously, especially in those last couple of three weeks. You're beginning to see that the that that the population is definitely up here. How we monitor it and we just went through this is an adjustment of our landfill hours. Uh people are generating a lot more garbage, yet I'm quite comfortable with the fact that the demographics with relation to. Part time versus full time hasn't changed much. It's just that the part time is more here than they were before. That by itself is an issue because we still have the same infrastructure that we have. Against the new demands that are being placed on that infrastructure, landfill being one of the big ones. Uh and and we still don't have any more taxes to pay that with. It is what it is. So now, when you're bringing us this kind of information, unless it's going to come up in the second half of this. We still got the problem of how do we pay for what we need to have. Because the demographics, even if the population doesn't change, the usage is going to definitely change. So I was wondering if anywhere in the presentation you could address something like that.
Yeah, thank you. And uh through the mayor, um it's a great question. Um one thing I wanted to first uh I guess point out is that. Um with with respect to. How we uh how we look at this from a a financial standpoint and a co- um impact on services, when we do the development charge background study. We are typically looking at the the peak occupancy, uh the peak population at uh uh full occupancy in the summertime. So uh it's it's difficult to uh understand exactly how that occupancy is changing from um. Summer to to winter as in different seasons, but so we're we're basically assuming. Uh at peak occupancy, what the population is uh of both permanent and seasonal dwellings. And so. When we're looking at historic service standards and demands on services, we're looking at total population of both permanent and seasonal. And uh going forward, we're looking at total population growth of both permanent and seasonal. So there'll be more discussion in the development charges background study. Uh with respect to how that is being uh looked at and how it's calculated with respect to need for service. And um ultimately um service impacts. Um it's your point with respect to, you know, looking at seasonal and how we define it is a good point. Um I think it's fair that we, you know, we. We could call them uh second homeowners, uh we could call them um part time, full time. Um. So we are, again, addressing this, the service impacts from a uh. Uh for in terms of the development charge needs and servicing needs in the D C study. In this study, we're really trying to understand. What the demographics are of uh of these in of these individuals. We we want to understand. Uh when we look when we look at um census data, how they're being captured in the census, what's being missed in the census. And so. The census is only capturing those that are reported as being a permanent um dwelling at the time of the census enumeration. And so. If you've converted and you're living there full time, you're being picked up as a as a permanent residence, and we're identifying that in. In the population data in our data. And so. We're trying to do our best to categorize these 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 individuals as best we can in terms of who represents. Uh part of the permanent population base and part of the 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 seasonal population base. And that's important from a demographic standpoint. Because we don't want to double count the population. We don't want to count them as permanent dwelling uh permanent residents. Um in Halliburton and permanent residents, say, in the G T A. So we have to, we have to categorize them this way. And there really isn't um. I I don't think there's a better way that we can do it other than than to identify them as one or the other, but we have identified. Um, you know, the the nuances of the of the permanent and seasonal population base. We've also. Identified that the housing occupancy patterns are different of typically of those that are uh part of making it part of the seasonal base. And we will again speak to the servicing impacts of these of these residents as we work further along in the D C background study. So those are maybe just a few, a few things I can offer for you to help explain uh this uh yeah and respond to your question.
Mister C E O and then Counselor Dave.
Yeah, thank you, Warden. Uh just further to Jamie's comments, Counselor, I think one of the things is and and Ms. Purcell is going to get into the next steps of this data. But I think it's important just that at this level, what we'll use it for is when we're doing our forecasting going forward on service demands and needs. That's where this data becomes important to us is when we're sharing outlets, your point are limited or or restricted funding that we have is we'll use this data in our forecasting of of where. We think to prioritize servicing spending as we go forward. So that's kind of the other part of it. And Elizabeth will talk more towards the the next steps of this particular process, but there's kind of a double value to us here on this information.
Counselor Dave.
Um thanks uh to the presenters and thanks to Counselor Rayle for for really summarizing a lot of the thoughts that were circulating in my mind. Because we do have these two distinct segments of our population, which are decreasingly distinct. And it's and your answer to Counselor Rayle was very helpful in in understanding how you reconcile the seasonal with the permanent. Um I thought particularly interesting within your data were the conversion rates. And why I from permanent, I'm sorry, from seasonal to permanent um uh housing and why I think that's um particularly helpful for us here at this table. Is because it it gives us a prelude to the the sort of service need changes to Counselor Rayle's point. That are going to occur that have not have nothing to do with population growth so much as. Demands on services that exist at a at a higher rate. So that for me was the real magic slot. Of um of of data that that um I will certainly be taking away. And knowing that that henceforth, you're going to be looking in real terms at the total population when it comes to D C plan, D C planning. Rather than the permanent is also um really good news because that that was one of my concerns is that. We were potentially going to focus too much on the permanent population when in reality, it's the total that matters. But that's where you're headed next. So thank you. All of that was extremely clarifying.
That's great. Questions, uh Counselor Carter.
In in dealing with government, it's always um it's always. Confusing and gets more confusing uh in the previous con- uh conversation we had in presentation. It was uh there were in um population statistics that were given, but those were population statistics that were. Um that were governed by the Ministry of Health. As opposed to these ones that are somewhat influenced by the Ministry of Finance. And as we can see, they're different. And uh so, uh you know, I I understand what we're doing here for the D Cs. I understand that we're going to have to accept this. And I understand that it's going to become our official document. I guess my concern is that we have to. Understand that um you know, this isn't the Bible. Um this is uh something that is uh um that is indicative of what our situation is. I'll take as an example, if you if you go to the average household income, and I know it's very difficult because if you look at. The various uh statistics from Stat Can, they have. Before tax and after tax and so on and so forth. But here we have the average household income in Halliburton at ninety three thousand one hundred. And we know that in, you know, because involved in housing and with uh with social services. Our median income is more like fifty seven, eight. Because here we do not have a normal distribution of incomes across across the county, and it's probably. More exacerbated here than it is in other locations. So we have realized that, you know, fifty percent of our population is down at under sixty thousand, yet our average is ninety three. So it's uh, you know, we can't just, we have to be careful in using the numbers. The other one. That uh I think is important and it was in your uh. Uh this the summary document at the beginning, and I brought this up the last time, but. You know, you you're projecting the age of the population. Uh it says that in um. Over sixty five, forty five percent uh will be uh it'll make up forty five percent of the population in two thousand and fifty one. Stats can data in uh two thousand and twenty one showed our median age at around sixty. And by definition, as long as those people didn't move and they survived, um in two thousand and twenty six, they will be sixty five. So we know that, you know, almost by definition, fifty percent of the population will be over sixty five in two thousand and twenty six and not two thousand and fifty one. So. You know, you have to look at this data and take this data, but not just. You know, quote it right out because there are some things that could be a bit misleading about it. So. It was it was just a comment.
Thank you. Uh Mary.
Seeing the moderate growth that you're predicting, like fifty four units as as it spins down. And we we're we're right now experiencing uh the highest construction costs that uh we've ever experienced. And and uh what what's your thought on development charges with the low? Uh would you care to comment on that uh with the amount of growth? And since that is another deterrent. Uh for people to build. So I just be anxious to hear your comments on that.
Uh so you uh uh stood mayor, I think I would probably defer my comments on that for now because uh we have a s- a specialist um. At Watson who's going to be leading the development charge study. He could, I think he could talk to to with you at more length, uh greater length on that. And we haven't started the study, so. Um I I think it's probably best to wait until we've we've weighed in on that study before we we get into a discussion on D Cs um. But I would be happy to come back with with Peter, who's going to be leading that work and and we could collaborate on 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 that that answer. Uh but I think it might be better to wait until we start the work.
Uh my information is that there's a record number of repossession going on in this county area at the moment. I know some real estate agents are relisting three and four. So that's another factor that's going to change. So all these uh expensive places that were built as homes. The pair of people having trouble financing them, the interest and 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 the loss of jobs that's going on. So I don't know what's going on here. I guess it'll, time will tell.
Counselor Ralph.
One of the things that I think we were alluding to here is just the whole housing stock opportunity. There isn't any. Uh and what is available is is either in the conversion step from people who already have homes who are affluent enough to be able to afford them or have inherited them. Uh and and they are staying, which which obviously now creates a problem for the new people, hence the the lower ages. Uh being dropped because it's not that they can't afford, they just can't buy anything. There's nothing available. It's not there to buy. Now, one of the things that's that's come out of this thing is especially because we're rural, we don't have a tremendous amount of municipal water and sewage. Which makes it a little difficult to develop anything here. But we've been talking about i- in the investigative stages about uh communal type scenarios as they have done in Frontenac County. As to whether or not that would or would not be something that would work in Halliburton County. Having said that, now you start dealing with what does a province want to see for us? Is that part of their plan? And if the answer to that is no, then we're behind the eight ball before we get off the ground. So I I I'm just wondering uh how much influence that's going to have over the direction of where we can or cannot go. When it looks at more affordable, denser, I appreciate we we're not going to have eight and ten story buildings. Uh if we do, they're going to be very rare. But for the most part, requiring an acre and a half to two acres for a physical piece of. Uh it also is something that is just not conducive to what we have. But in the communal system, which they have in Frontenac. You can reduce that significantly. I don't know if that's part of anything that you were going to do in the future. And if not, if you have a comment on that.
Gary.
Through the mayor, it's I think that's a it's a great question. Um we've talked at length in the report about this sort of conundrum between. Uh labor force growth and population growth because and we and we've talked to counsel about this in the past that we know that in order to have a sustainable long term. Uh plan for the county, we need to see uh growth not only in population, but also in in labor. And we know that there's a labor shortage in Halliburton, and it's you can see from the statistics in the report that it's very acute in the Halliburton. Uh region and 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 the broader uh Halliburton, Muskoka, Cortha region. And so there's this, there's this conundrum that, you know, you can't accommodate. New labor if you can't accommodate housing and you can't, but you can't provide housing if you don't have services. And so. These are, you know, real challenges that you are going to have to continue to grapple with. Um like not only do you need more. Opportunities for uh a different broader variety of housing to accommodate more immediate and low income groups, you know, and to provide more. Uh attainable and affordable housing options, but you need more options for rental housing as well as ownership housing. And so and uh you can't really look at these things without a proper plan for services. And so. I have done a lot of work in uh places like Frontenac County. It's one of the only areas I've that I work in that. Um where the entire county does not have a fully serviced settlement area. Um Sidham is their only partially serviced settlement area there. And so they have to look at other options for. For accommodating growth through communal services. So they they do seem to be a leader in that area. I I have not looked into. Um exploring uh um solutions with respect to to communal services uh as part of this work, but. Uh I I think that would be something beyond the table that would that could be looked at. I'm not sure where um. Where the county and its local municipalities are at this time in in looking at communal services. There are a a whole range of of. Of opportunities and challenges associated with that. And so um I think it's it's something that. Needs to be considered, but uh obviously it needs to be considered comprehensively, given those opportunities and challenges. But you you clearly have a a challenge going forward with respect to the sustainability of your population and labor force and. Um looking at this, the age structure um and looking at other municipalities across Ontario, I we don't see. We don't typically see municipalities with this uh heavy of of a percentage of population in that sixty five age group and where they are. No one's immune to this because of the aging of the baby boom population, but because of the high rates of immigration. That we've experienced across this this province over the last uh decade and beyond, it has mitigated that to some extent, but it's not mitigating. It's not being mitigated in Halliburton um largely because most of the migration is coming from. The sixty plus age group. Um and again, you have this challenge that you can't accommodate younger people. Because of affordability challenges and housing shortages. So it's it's a it's a it's a significant challenge, and we don't have all the answers to it. to it today. We can point out the problems, but this report doesn't get into answering all the solutions quite yet.
Gary?
Thanks. Just I think it's important for council to to recognize that what we're having here, this is a starting point for us. This is an area of data collection that we didn't have access to. So we're talking about things about our service areas, the potential alternative servicing types to accommodate growth, housing, all this type of things. And I went back before, but our forecasting and how we do our economic forecasting on where we're going to allocate resources as we go forward. So this is a starting point for us. All the information we've received today, which is really strong information, it will come back. It will start forming the basis for the official plan update. It'll start forming the basis for our financial forecasting, as as I mentioned numerous times. And so that's the importance of what we're doing today. One of the offshoots of this is potentially the development charges piece to your point, councillor Fury, is that something that will be brought forward to council on where we're at because we're, you know, to be, we're late into the game on DCs in Halliburton County. And so it's really good information we have right now, and I and I compliment Mr. Cook and his team because we had a lot, lot of conversations on the scenarios we use going forward to your point, Murray. And I think that's why it's really important, and 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 I was appreciative of the watch from coming forward and not overstating. They came in at a lower level, identified the restrictions placed on to councillor Carter's point with respect to using the Ministry of Finance numbers, which have significant limitations as to on-the-ground issues that we're going to be dealing with. So I think we're at a great starting point going forward. Ms. Purcell is going to talk more about what step two could possibly look like, but I think the information we have will go a long way to start answering some of the questions. And Mr. Cook's exactly right. All very good points brought up. We're just not there yet to give some more definitive responses on certain things yet. But in the coming months and and time, you'll find that you we start kind of keening some of those balls for you.
Other questions or comments this time? Is there a resolution I've made to receive?
That the County Halliburton Phase One Growth Analysis Draft Report and Presentation be received?
Someone move councillor Ryle, second by councillor Carter. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. All right, now we're going to go to four, four, one, I believe, Elizabeth, we're going to get your report.
Yes.
Thank you, Warden Burton. So just following up on that extensive presentation, there was an associated staff report that did highlight some of the key findings from the Watson report. The, as CAO Dyke noted, that the next steps, sorry, to go back, the key findings were all established through that presentation, so happy to discuss them further, but it would just be a regurgitation of information for you. The next steps when it comes to this to this growth strategy, it will help inform should council choose to have staff proceed with the completion of a DC background study, help inform that study. So for council's benefit, because I recognize that the overall project started under the previous council term, the development charge background study actually started first. And through their compilation, their their start of compiling growth data for the county, they realized that it was a bit sparse, and that's what started the growth strategy project to help inform the development charge background study. And as CAO Dyke noted, the development charge background study is just one component that the growth strategy helps to inform. Growth strategies across the province are really useful tools when it comes to developing official plan documents and planning for housing and land needs for the term of and for the horizon of an official plan. Ours is a little bit dated and does factor in growth projections that are over ten years old now. And obviously, we've seen that there's been a lot of changes in trends when it comes to growth and population and those kinds of needs and pressures that are put on municipalities. So when it is time to do a comprehensive official plan review, this will very much so help inform that process and really ensure that we're providing adequate and appropriate lands that will serve the county and the local municipalities for the horizon of that official plan. And also, as noted, it it all, the data also very much so benefits both the county and the local municipalities when it comes to financial planning for the future because you can see generally where where we're going to be in the next thirty years and what might be needed. So from that, the the resolution that or the recommendation that's in the report is that council approve the final growth strategy that was attached, which is the Watson report. And we will be bringing a future report to council to further discuss the development charge background study and what council would like to see from that, particularly because it was a project that was initiated under the previous council term. So to have a discussion about a DC background study and what DC bylaws can do for both the county and the local municipalities, because the project did contemplate the development of one not only for the county but for each of the four local municipalities as well. So recognizing as that it has been quite a long time since that project started, and there are new faces at the council table, then who reviewed that RFP and and gave the go-ahead to start the project, we will be bringing a report in the coming couple meetings so that council can have that review and and consideration for next steps. So in essence, the growth strategy is very valuable, not only for the completion of a DC background study, but also for other components of county and municipal work. So as a standalone document, it is very valuable, and the context in which it was created was respect to the DC background study, but it has a much broader impact than just that. So staff is recommending that the growth strategy be approved today, but I am happy to answer any questions that council has.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Questions? Councillor Dayo?
Thank you. And I I might actually be directing this question to the CAO, although be delighted to hear your your answers to. I really liked the report. I thought it was very well done and beautifully presented, and it will be a benefit to us going forward. My question is, to what degree, and we use this report to in our negotiations with provincial ministries for for funding, formula, et cetera, when it comes to receiving funding for Halliburton, do they care? Are they aware that we've got this quite distinct permanent seasonal mix? Or are they only fixated on the permanent, the permanent population? Is this of any advantage to us when it comes to negotiating with upper ministries?
I would say the short answer is absolutely, because one of the difficulties we have in dealing with the province is is they they're not strong on nuance. And and they're very, they they hear rural Ontario, and they think Woodstock. They think like that type of rural Ontario, and then they think the North, right? And so places like Halliburton is kind of lost in the in the middle, where they understand we have, yes, we have influences from southern Ontario, but we're more akin to the stuff that's happening in northern Ontario. And so the more information we have, and it's verifiable data that we have that we can show, there is a difference, and this is why we, this is why we need it here. This is why we're different than, right? Same issue Renfrew is having with with area because they're quite different than even our county structure with the services they provide. So any the the an increased level in verifiable data we have can do nothing but augment our our positioning to the government on support policy changes and anything of that nature.
Any questions? Councillor Carter?
Yeah, I would certainly support accepting this report as soon as possible so that we can get on to that next stage. You know, DCs are not a cash grab. I mean, DCs are, you know, basically a philosophical situation of, as you see in dice art with the expansion of your water and wastewater, there's that's real money. And it comes down to who should be paying for that expansion? Should it be the growth or should it be, you know, the existing tax base? And so it's a it's it's a bit of a philosophical discussion, but I believe, you know, the people, if if a builder were to come here and say, I want to build a hundred and fifty houses, and that's going to, you know, cause us to have an expansion of our water wastewater, well, I think the builder should be contributing to that or if not paying for all of it. So right now, we end up negotiating something with somebody like that, but it it's ad hoc as opposed to a set of, you know, transparent rules that people can understand. And also, you know, these development charges are, you know, I remember being in one conversation at Roma where, you know, somebody, you know, medium-sized town, they had thirty or forty million dollars in the bank from development charges so that when they were contemplating some of these next steps, when it came down to their asset management plan, they had something to work from. You know, we right now have, you know, a little more than zero, you know, that to to work from. So this is a really important thing, and I would like us to get, you know, pushing forward on this next step as quickly as possible. So I will move it.
Councillor Ryle?
I totally agree. I my comparison to this thing is like the building department trying to operate without building code. The building code does not change radically, but it does evolve over time. And so consequently, if the people who are doing the inspections are not aware of what's currently going on, they can't make effective decisions based on what is or is not acceptable. I don't see this as being any different. If we're going to go ahead and look at things like developmental charges or even just where should we or should we not expand, we need to have some basic data in order to start that list. And I recognize we're talking about consulting, which is sometimes a good thing, it's sometimes a bad. I think in this case, it's a good thing, and I think there's more going to be good more good information rather than data coming out of this than than wasted. So I would strongly support this one.
Councillor Dayo?
Further to councillor Ryle's previous point about communal servicing, I wonder, is there scope to look at communal servicing within either the DC study or or something else? In in the case of Algonquin Highlands, for example, we don't have any service, fully serviced area in the entire township, you know, and we probably are not going to be looking in that direction. But communal servicing is something that that, you know, is very relevant for us. Does that have a home in any of the projected studies upcoming?
Elizabeth?
Thank you, Warden. We will be bringing a report about communal servicing to council to lay out sort of what Jamie Cook was talking about, the pros and the cons, the benefits and liabilities when it comes to communal servicing in the near future for council's consideration. And it is a, as Frontenac has shown, it is a viable option if the conditions are right. So we will be bringing something back. And particularly with respect to the growth strategy, municipalities that have one go through routine routine reviews every five to ten years of their growth strategies to ensure that what they're projecting still meets the context of that day. And if the projections need to be updated to reflect new conditions that have entered. So that would be something that if if it is in the future decided to proceed with communal servicing, then that can be looked at through an update to the growth strategy to kind of recalibrate the future for the county and and the local municipalities. And I would anticipate that if the if communal servicing was something that was implemented across the the local municipalities, that it would probably have something to do with or impact development charges in some way. And and again, same with the growth strategy, development charge bylaws have to be renewed every five years. So it gives that kind of nimbleness to change to the conditions of the day.
I have a resolution moved by councillor Carter, second by deputy mayor Ryle or councillor Ryle.
That the County Halliburton Growth Strategy File Report by Watson Associates dated January twenty twenty-five and attached staff report PLN zero three twenty twenty-five be approved.
All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Councillor, I think we'll entertain a ten-minute break. Uh, Council, I think we'll entertain a ten minute break. Thank you. We'll call the meeting back to order. We're down to item C one on the agenda, uh, council code of conduct. Michelle.
Good morning, Warden and members of County Council. Uh, the council code of conduct is before in staff reports before the members today as requested last year following our review of the annual health and safety policies. Municipal codes of conduct are required under the municipal act. And the current code of conduct attached to the staff report was adopted by County Council on February the twenty seventh, two thousand and nineteen. Code of Conduct outlines the rules, roles, and responsibilities of members of council. It sets clear expectations for the members, promotes accountability and professionalism in governance, and aligns with provincial legislation. Not only are the legislative requirements addressed in the attached policy, but it also contains information considered to be best practice, such as conduct at council meetings, discrimination and harassment, social media, and procedures for both formal and informal complaints. Also forming part of the report for council's information is the, is Bill one, is Bill two forty one, the Municipal Accountability Act, which was introduced on December twelfth, twenty twenty four. It's designed to strengthen municipal governments and governance and accountability. And if passed, the proposed legislation would amend both the Municipal Act and the City of Toronto Act. Highlights of the amendments proposed in the new legislation include standardizing municipal codes of conduct with mandatory training for council members, establishing establishing an integrity commissioner investigation process and the related reporting requirements, establishing a role for the Integrity Commissioner of Ontario in municipal codes of conduct, and introducing a mechanism for members of council and boards to be removed or disqualified for a period of four years if found to be in violation of the code with a report from the Integrity Commissioner of Ontario and an unanimous vote from council. Should the proposed legislation be enacted, it will come into effect for the twenty twenty six term of council. And I would like to point out that as a result of the provincial alleged, sorry, the provincial election, staff believe that this bill will be reintroduced when the legislature forms. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Comments? Seeing none, Miss Looson.
That report C C L K zero two twenty twenty five, council code of conduct be received.
If someone moved, Counselor Dangusson, seconded by Counselor Carter. All in favor? Just carry it. Health and Safety, the uh, Health and and Safety Annual Policy Review. Michelle?
Thank you. Um, the Occupational Ha- the Occupational Health and Safety Acts provides the legislative framework and tools required to achieve the goal of making Ontario workplaces safe and healthy. It requires that employers, including municipalities, prepare and review annually a written occupational health and safety policy and develop programs to implement that policy. The policies presented on today's agenda and the related presentation are to satisfy this legislative requirement. Next slide, please. The Health and Safety Policy Statement. The Health and Safety Policy Statement signed by County Council is a leadership policy that demonstrates council's commitment to health and safety within the organization. Council's support of this policy, along with members of our senior management team, is a visible commitment from both parties that effectively managing health, safety, and wellness is essential to the operation of the county. Some additional highlights from the policy include a commitment to integrating health and safety into strategies, processes, and performance measures, recognizing that it supports good business, provide an environment that encourages all employees to participate in developing, promoting, and improving health and safety at work, and an overall goal of improving health and safety strategies, programming, and performance. Next slide, please. Couple ahead there, Travis. Duties and Responsibilities is the next policy. Everyone in the workplace, including members of council, have a role to play in keeping the workplace safe and healthy. When asked who is responsible for health and safety in the workplace, the simple answer is everyone. Workers who see a health and safety issue have a duty to report it to the employer, and the employer is required to not only address the issue but to acquaint workers with any health and safety hazards specifically related to their job. This, the objective of this policy is to ensure that everyone understands their roles and responsibilities for maintaining a healthy and safe workplace. The third policy is the Workplace Violence and Harassment and Sexual Harassment Policy. This policy expresses the county's commitment to addressing workplace violence, sexual harassment and sexual harassment harassment within the workplace and fulfills the county's statutory obligations. This policy further demonstrates the county's commitment to ensuring the safety and security of its employees. The policy applies equally to everyone and outlines various procedures from submitting a complaint to the investigation process and any remedial disciplinary or legal action required according to the circumstances. This policy and related course, Respect in the Workplace, are reviewed by all staff as part of the county's onboarding process. Next slide, please. Benefits of Health and Safety in the Workplace. County employees work in diverse environments, the office administration building, I T, public works, economic development and tourism, and emergency services. Each workplace presents its own unique safety challenges, and a strong health and safety program helps to prevent incidents, reduce costs, and comply with legislation. Next slide, please. Some of the benefits and the related examples of the health and safety program here at the county include reducing workplace injuries and illness in illnesses. The Health and Safety Program helps to prevent workplace accidents and reduce illness rates among county employees. Examples of this include a mandatory health and safety training when onboarding new staff, creation of department-specific policies and procedures relating to health and safety, and completion of the county incident report, which is then used to track types of incidents, determine training needs, and equipment-related purchases. Next slide, please. Another benefit of the Health and Safety Program is cost savings and liability reduction. Fewer workplace injuries lead to lower W S I B premiums and a reduced cost for lost time claims. Next slide, please. Improve Productivity. Employees who feel safe and are more engaged are less likely to miss work. Preventing workplace incident incidents reduces operational disruptions and absenteeism. Examples of this at the county that we use are department-specific health and safety training such as hazardous materials, women's training, ergonomic assessments for administrative staff, completion of monthly inspections and the related follow-up reports to ensure that any health and safety issues are identified and dealt with in a timely manner. Next slide, please. Ensuring Compliance with Legislation. Ontario has strict safety laws, and compliance isn't op- isn't optional. Health and Safety Programs ensure adherence to the Occupational Healthy Health and Safety Act and relevant county policies. Examples that we use here at the county include the Workplace Violence, Harassment, and Sexual Harassment Policy presented to council today, a multi-workforce workforce joint health and safety committee with equal representation from both workers and management with a commitment to improve health and safety here in the organization, the Occupational Health and Safety Act icon that is available on all county computers, and where staff do not have access to a county computer, the book is posted on the Health and Safety Board, and proactive safety programs and policies to help reduce risk associated with Ministry of Labor inspections and potential penalties. The annual review demonstrates County Council's support and investment in the safety initiatives here at the county, and by prioritizing workplace safety, we reduce costs, increase efficiencies, comply with legislation. comply with legislation, and protect our county employees. Next slide, please. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Michelle. Questions? Comments? Resolution?
Uh, the staff report, C L K zero one, twenty twenty-five, Health and Safety Annual Policy Review be approved in compliance with section twenty-five-two J of the Occupational Health and Safety Act.
Someone move, councillor Dayoo, second by councillor Carter. All in favor? It's carried. Uh, Corporate Services Finance, twenty twenty-four, Council and Committee of Reneweration and Expenses, Andrea.
Thank you, Warden, and Council. Uh, as per section two eighty-four of the Municipal Act, the treasurer is required to provide to council an itemized statement on remuneration and expenses paid in the previous year. Uh, the attachment to my report is intended to satisfy that requirement. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Resolution?
That, that staff report, C O R zero seven, twenty twenty-five, Councilroom Committee Member Ruminations and Expenses for twenty twenty-four be approved.
If someone move, councillor McEchnie, second by councillor Dayoo. All in favor? It's carried. Alexandra. Uh, Economic Development, Economic Development, February twenty twenty-five, Status Update, Scott.
Uh, good morning, Warden and members of council. Uh, just in front of you today is our first status update for the Economic Development Department. Uh, just a couple items of note. Um, we are just in the process of, of starting off and doing, um, starting our first business retention and, uh, expansion campaign that would be countywide. This is just a process. We've had our economic development strategy in place now for two years, so it's a, a touch point with our businesses to, to gauge where that's at, and then also it's a, a more cost-effective way that we can take data from that and update the economic development strategy without, you know, waiting three or to five years and going the consultant route. Just in our work plan as, as an F Y, we just pushed the start date of that back a little bit, just so it doesn't coincide with the public consultation that'll take place for our county strategic plan, so there just reduces confusion related to that. And we will be bringing a report back because there is a, a working group associated with the B R N E program that would just appoint the members to the working group that you would have approval of. And then lastly, just, we will be presenting, um, the updated wayfinding strategy to the member municipalities in, in March and April, just working with our consultants, just kind of line up the dates on that. And then once we get additional impact, um, feedbacks or on the design, um, the draft designs that they've provided, we'll bring that strategy back for, uh, review and then final approval by County Council. I'm happy to field any questions if there are any.
Scott, uh, questions? Councillor Ryle?
Yeah, you're gonna be doing a P R N E survey. Is that the one from Omaphra, or is this one we're gonna be developing ourselves?
Uh, through you, Warden. Um, Omaphra has a, a really good template, and in the past, when I've done it, what I've found with the Omaphra one is it's, it's really, really long. Uh, and businesses tend to, I'm not gonna, they'll, did they just lose interest? So what I've traditionally done in the past is taken that document and, and kind of parsed it down. So I have a draft I've used in other communities. So it'll be a condensed version of that. And then really, a, a lot of what we learn in those conversations with business owners or managers is really through the conversation. It's great data to have, obviously, but a, a lot of it comes down to kind of those anecdotal conversations that we can, you know, pull and, and look at that, so. Looking at something that's between fifteen minutes for the interview process, where I believe if the Omaphra one, if you kind of go through it like question by question, it's like a twenty-five to thirty-five minute interview or survey.
Cease?
Yeah, just so that you know, I was involved with both the two thousand and eleven one at the county and the two thousand and seventeen one in Highlands East. And you were absolutely correct.
Other questions? Resolution? Sorry, councillor Danielson.
Uh, just a comment in full disclosure, I have mentioned this to Scott. But one of the things that I understood when we, we brought an economic development position back to the county was that that person would be working closely with the municipalities on projects that they were trying to bring forward. And, and I know that Scott has spoken with the C A Os, but I just wonder if, if, you know, in advance of, of preparing his, uh, department's work plan for the year, that he might bring that to council as well, just saying, is there anything that you really, uh, are interested in us following up, or, you know, just, uh, just a point of, of reference for us as well?
Go.
Uh, yeah, through you, Warden. I'm happy to do that. Um, I, I reach it to the C A Os, uh, in the fall, and that was a product or conversation we had with Minden Hills, just about some downtown revitalization. And again, I, I think our C A Os alluded to it, the work plans are living documents, so, um, if that's the case, I'm, you know, happy to figure out any way we can lighten the load on our, our member municipalities and work with them collaboratively on projects. So if at any time you want to reach us, to us directly as a department, um, or through this, uh, a, a council meeting about a, a project you'd like our assistance with, we're happy to do that.
The questions or comments? Resolution?
Uh, that report, E D T zero four, twenty twenty-five, Economic Development, Status Report for February twenty twenty-five, uh, be received.
Someone move, councillor Danielson, second by councillor Shell. All in favor? It's carried. Uh, short terms of reference, Short Rental Appeals Committee.
Uh, thank you, Warden. So in front of you today is just a staff report, uh, one that summarizes, uh, just the membership of the Short Term Rental Appeals Committee, and then also attached, uh, is the, are the terms of reference to the committee. And, and just as a refresher, the, the committee would be a committee of councils, so any decisions made there would be subsequently come back to County Council for final approval. It would meet on an as-needed basis, so there's not a, a set schedule. It would be based on essentially the number of appeals we receive. And the membership, as it's outlined in the Terms of References for the remainder of this term of council, uh, and moving forward, we would amend the bylaw, um, for the next council and basically have it coincide as a, as a four-year appointment to that committee. And also, just, uh, as a link in the report is just, um, an outline of the actual appeals process as, um, identified in the bylaw, and happy to field any questions related to that. Third.
Questions? Resolution?
That Halberton County Council approved staff report, E D T zero four, twenty twenty-five, Terms of Reference, Short Term, sorry, Short, um, Short Term Rental Appeal Committee, and that a bylaw be presented appointing members to the Short Term Rentals Appeal Committee for the remainder of this term of council.
Someone move, councillor McEchnie, second by Deputy Mayor, councillor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. I T, Information Technology, Work Plan Update, Mike.
Good morning, Warden Burton, members of council. Uh, so before you today is my I T work plan update report. Uh, some of the key, key highlights on the report, um, some of the projects that the I T staff have been working on. Uh, we're hard at work, uh, onboarding county departments to the new records management system, and we have, uh, seven of the departments done with one more to go. We've also been heavily involved in assisting, uh, D I S A R T, Minden Hills, and to a lesser extent, Algonquin Highlands with their records management implementations. We have completed a cybersecurity gap analysis and, uh, with a report expecting to come to council. I said the second March council meeting, my report, but there's since been a, a scheduling conflict, so we're looking at, uh, the first meeting in April at this point. We are working on, uh, updating our current incident, cybersecurity incident response policy and plans. And our service desk team completed approximately four hundred service desk tickets, uh, between January and mid-February. Does, I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions for Mike? Saying none, resolution?
Uh, that report, I T S zero one, twenty twenty-five, Information Technology Work Plan Update be received as information.
If someone move, councillor Shell, councillor Carter. All in favor? It's carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, Item J, Approval and Recommendations from the Joint Accessibility Committee. Sue?
Hello again, Warden Burton and members of council. Uh, before you, for its annual review is the two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-seven multi-year accessibility plan. The appendix, which lists detailed initiatives from each municipality, has been reviewed and revised in collaboration with county staff, local municipalities, and members of the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee. In addition, staff and members of the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee have reviewed a two thousand and twenty-four accessibility accomplishments document that highlights a selection of projects completed throughout the county last year. It should be noted that during the review of these documents at the committee table this year, local municipal staff joined virtually to discuss these projects and answer any questions the committee had about completed, ongoing, or future projects. Their time was much appreciated. On behalf of the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee, I am looking for council's approval of both of these documents, which with approval will be posted on the county's website to meet our legal obligations under the Accessibility for Ontario-ones with Disabilities Act and shared with local municipalities.
Thanks, Sue. Any questions? Resolution?
Uh, that Halberton County Council received the February twenty-six, twenty twenty-five staff report for the two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-seven multi-year joint accessibility plan, and further that the county, the County Council approves the two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-seven multi-year joint accessibility plan as presented.
Someone move. Councillor Danielson, second by councillor Ferry. All in favor? It's carried. Uh, Site Plan Accessibility Checklist?
So before you is a report on a site plan accessibility checklist initiative of the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee. This checklist was first brought to the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee in fall two thousand and twenty-three with the recommendation that the committee review the checklist to determine if it might be a tool the committee can use during site plan reviews at the committee table. The checklist draws on the Accessibility for Ontario-ones with Disability Act and its Integrated Accessibility Standards Regulation Guidelines. It is a reference tool only and should be used in conjunction with other guiding legislation. The committee reviewed, revised, and approved the checklist recommending that they use it for site plan reviews going forward and share it with local municipalities as well as others bringing site plans forward for review.
Questions? Resolution?
Uh, the staff report, C C S W B zero two, twenty twenty-five, Joint Accessibility Committee, uh, Site Plan Accessibility Checklist be received.
Could have someone move, councillor Danielson, second by councillor Dayoo. All in favor? It's carried. Thanks. External Boards and Agencies, uh, Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, uh, two thousand and twenty-five Ontario Election Priorities, I think, uh, I, I suppose in a small bit of report that we did have the handouts that we were able to put out last meeting, I think, Gary, they were?
Yes, they were.
And, uh, there is a resolution here that, uh, I would like to move forward with if we can. If there are any questions, we'll certainly try our best to answer.
Whereas Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus represents near the one quarter of Ontario's four hundred and forty-four municipalities, and whereas the U W C has outlined four priorities for the next Ontario government, which include addressing the regional economy and U S tariff threats, investing, in investing in municipal infrastructure, supporting housing development, and modernization of provincial programs to prevent homelessness and providing funding for community paramedicine programs. And whereas the priorities established by U W C support communities across eastern Ontario, now therefore be resolved that Halberton County Council supports the U W C two thousand and twenty-five provincial election priorities and direct staff to forward a copy of this resolution to the Honorable Doug Ford, Premier of Ontario, the Honorable Paul Colander, Ontario Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, Bonnie Crombie, Ontario Party Liberal Leader, Merritt Stiles, Leader of the Ontario N D P, and Mike Shriner, Ontario Green Party Leader.
Someone move. Councillor Danielson, second by councillor Shell. I suppose, uh, any discussion or questions? All in favor? It's carried. What's the motion? Bylaw? Oh, sorry, but.
Um, this, I don't have a notice of motion, but, um, and maybe this question's not the time and place for it, but I'm gonna ask it anyways. Cause I have quite a few of my constituents and are asking me about the concern about the, uh, the water and the snow. It's gonna be coming, hopefully, hopefully, we're all hoping and praying that it's not gonna be a problem, but are, are we ahead of this game uh, in regard to, um, being, being ready for something like, uh, a lot of water?
Gary, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, councillor. Um, I have been in contact with, with Mr. Klucy, and yes, they are. A lot of work has, renewal work is being done right now. I know the town, uh, the township of Minden Hills has done, done an amazing job down, getting rid of the snow from the downtown area as well as the work they've done on, on, on Horseshoe Lake Road, just because there was some flooding there yesterday, that, that was taken care of this morning, so. Yes, we, uh, we're ready for it as best we can. We're crossing our fingers that we don't get a lot of rain, as well as like drastic spikes in temperature over the next little while, but, uh, we are making preparations going forward. I will have, uh, Mr. Klucy prepare a, a, a briefing for council, we'll send around, let you know what we're doing and where we're going. But he is in contact, contact with your, with your local, uh, roadspeople and engineering departments going forward.
Thank you.
And also usually, starting in March, um, M N R F and Parks Canada have weekly meetings, and they are constantly updating the forecast for what's going to happen. Of course, you know, nobody can control the weather and, like we had a number of years ago, where all of a sudden turned to be sixty degrees in, uh, Kinesis Lake and a rainstorm. And we knew that three days later that was gonna flood Minden, but, um, you know, that's, but we do work on a weekly basis as, uh, as the normal course of things now. Sometimes there's nothing you can change about it, but at least you're, you can be prepared.
I had a, a Crow Valley Conservation meeting last week, and they, and they felt that one of our saviors out there is, there, there's absolutely no frost. And it's gonna let the, the moisture of the water, a chance to get away in the bush, there's absolutely no frost. Cease?
My question's the same, same kind. Have, have we made any, uh, do we know where the Transseverance stands on any of this stuff? Because if the water really starts coming, we're gonna end up with floods everywhere, like, it just affects all of us. We all have, uh, Transseverance dams.
Gary, go ahead.
Yeah, as, as councillor Carter mentioned, uh, we, we are in regular contact with them, and we're receiving regular notifications on flows, how much water they're restricting through their system or not restricting through their systems. That is part of the ongoing process. And as that information is available, we try to share it with council as much as we can. But again, I'll talk to, I'll have Mr. Klucy provide a little more detail for council as to, as the process, both preventative and active right now.
Councillor Danix?
Um, just for ongoing information, the correlation of equitable water flow also reflects regularly, yeah, water levels and, and, you know, concerns, so it's just, I'm willing to place a look for information.
Thanks for bringing that forward. Bylaws?
Um, that the following bylaws listed under the heading Consideration of Bylaws being acted and passed by law forty-two ninety-four to establish rates of compensation for members of County Council and by law forty-two ninety-five, two-point members, uh, to the Short Term Rental Appeals Committee.
If someone move, councillor McEchnie, second by councillor Ferry. All in favor? It's carried. Confirmation bylaw.
Yeah, the bylaw forty, forty-two ninety-six being a bylaw, confirm the proceedings of the February twenty-six, twenty twenty-five meeting of Halberton County Council be considered to be read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Someone move. Councillor Danielson, second by councillor Carter. All in favor? It's carried. Adjournment.
That the February twenty-six, twenty-five meeting of Halberton County Council be adjourned at eleven oh eight.
Someone move, councillor McEchnie, second by councillor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried, thank you. Thank you, staff, council.